Welcome, everybody, to the TC Palm Editorial Board Meeting to interview candidates for Fort Pierce City Commission District Two. I'm columnist Gil Smart. I'm joined today by fellow editorial board members Larry Reesman, columnist and community editor, and Adam Neal, editor and news director, along with our candidates Jeremiah Johnson and Michael Perry. I'm going to leave the questioning here today, and I'll open it up to other editorial board members at the end. Visuals editor Kelly Rogers is working behind the scenes to direct video coverage. If we get questions from our social media audience, we might decide to pose one or two of those at the end of the session. I want to thank our candidates, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Perry, for streamlining this process by completing questionnaires ahead of time. Board members have reviewed them, and you can do the same at tcpalm.com/elections, where you'll also find other stories, video, and information about the November 3 election. At the conclusion of this interview, our editorial board members will discuss possibly writing an editorial to recommend a candidate in this race. We've got several questions lined up here today. We might end up having more of a conversation rather than a straight Q and A. The goal is to be completed in 45 minutes to an hour, and because of our time constraints, I'm going to ask the candidates to please keep their answers concise and be respectful of one another. We'll start the questioning with the incumbent, Mr. Johnson. Sir, why don't you give us a quick profile, briefly introduce yourself briefly, and tell folks why you're running for office again?
Sure. I just wanted to say thank you to the editorial board and those folks that are watching. My name is Jeremiah Johnson, the incumbent for Pierce City Commission District Two, and I'm just excited about running and being in this race again. First thought about running for office in 2001, and 2016, it came to realism and ran against three fine opponents. And I'm here today just to talk about and share about myself. I'm running for office because I just love the job. I love the opportunities. I love serving in the city of Fort Pierce. I'm a lifelong resident of Fort Pierce, and this opportunity is just one that just keeps everyone connected, keeps myself connected, my family, my wife's Kelly, she's a schoolteacher. We have two awesome children, Noah, he's in college at the University of Central Florida, and go Knights, and Leah, she's a senior at Lincoln Park Academy. And my son also graduated from Lincoln Park. But, you know, just being able to move us forward in positive directions. Fort Pierce has, of course, seen those swings of the pendulum for many, many years, and I just feel that I'm the most qualified for the position and excited for this opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Mr. Perry, a brief intro. Tell folks who you are and why you're running.
Yes, my name is Mike Perry. I've been in Fort Pierce for 63 years, and I've always been an advocate of good government. I've run for office several times. I've been on several boards, the planning board, Board of Adjustments, City of Fort Pierce, the Citizens Advisory Committee, also served St. Lucie County at the Housing Finance Authority years back. And I think that the city needs to be shaped up and run more like a business. I think we spend a lot of money unnecessarily. I understand we've got body cameras that we don't use. Crime is up, according to one of your recent articles. It's down in the county, but it's up in the city. And I just feel like I have unencumbered time to devote to this job. I'll be on call 24/7. I answer my phone 24 hours a day. And I think that we need some changes. We need to change the thinking a little bit, and I think I'm the guy for the job.
I have to watch. I wind up muting myself and then talking into the atmosphere. Mr. Perry, you get first crack at this question, and it sort of builds on what you just said. I want you to give the incumbent, Mr. Johnson, and the city commission as a whole, a letter grade, A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever, and justify that. Why? Be as specific as possible as to things you think have been done wrong or could be done better.
Well, I think that some of the things they've done wrong in the past have something to do with the utilities authority. They added a dollar per gray pair to the utility bill some years ago to beautify the city. I think that's incumbent on the property owners to be beautifying the city. A lot of those properties are rental properties, and they rent, and the property owner doesn't care about them, so the city stepping in and adds a dollar to their bill. The utilities authority also collects garbage, the solid waste for the city. That's on the utilities bill. People equate that to electric. They just look at the bottom line of the bill. So there's big complaints about our electric service and how much it is, but a lot of that's inflated by what the city puts on the electric bill. I think that that needs to be changed, of course. The county, if you have county solid waste, it's on your tax bill, I believe. That seems like a more appropriate place to put it. I think that needs some discussion. And I think our police department needs a lot to be desired. We've had a lot of problems there lately, citizens being locked in cars, citizens being slapped around at the hospital. I think they need to do some changes in that department, and I think that should be open for discussion. And let's see, I don't know if I can remember the whole question you had, but that's...
Well, give him a grade. Give Mr. Johnson and the current commissioner a grade, a letter grade. How would you grade him?
Well, quite frankly, I'd say it's probably somewhere around a C+.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, grade yourself, your performance in office, as well as that of the commission here.
Sure. Thank you. You know, to be honest with you, everyone needs improvement, and I put myself in that category at all times. And so you have to self-analyze and self-check exactly where you stand with any given subject. And as far as the commission, for me, you know, I would give myself a B, because there's definitely more that can be done within each individual. And I would also give the city and the city commission a B. And why do I say that? I say that because I bring about change within this commission as the youngest member of the commission. Being forward-thinking is part of my goal every single day that I come to work and I go to work, especially when I enter to a public meeting, and forward-thinking such as challenging the norms. And, you know, my opponent brings up some good issues. However, when you look at the efficiency of government, which is a big part of the improvement process for me, looking at the efficiency, the items that he just pinpointed, and I took a couple of notes, was the dollar charge for the Clean and Safe Community Initiative. It's a mechanism of billing. That's also with the solid waste. It's a mechanism of billing. And how do you achieve efficiency through a process that's streamlined, that's built together? And when you have a city-owned utility such as the FPUA, then why would we not take advantage of that if we're going to use a utility system that's billed by mail? And that also includes correspondence that goes out to our public and to our customers and to our residents of the city? So while, you know, I couldn't say that I disagree, I do disagree on the part that you use efficiency to prepare those processes. The other part is the Fort Pierce Police Department. You know, that's a challenge within itself. That's a challenge not only locally but nationally with trying to secure and employ folks that have their heart in it, that are willing to put others before themselves. And there are some bad apples, and he mentioned one case specifically, and yeah, that is a rotten situation. You can talk to the leadership at the Fort Pierce Police Department in the city. They're going to say the exact same thing. But this year, and one thing that I've been promoting and requesting for a number of years, this is my first term in office in the last two and a half, three years in the budget cycles, is an increase in a focus in on the police department, increase in their training, their equipment, the increase in their budget for getting their salaries in line with where they should be. They have a step plan that has not been followed. And I'm proud to say that this year, in two days ago, in a budget resolution, we were able to bring that forward, where we increased the Fort Pierce Police Department budget by over $400,000, $450,000 to enhance these opportunities, to get qualified workforce, to bring folks back in line with where they should be. In addition to that, you know, to secure and to hold on to those employees, we've been making a large investment in training upfront when we hire folks. And in a few years, it's been known, and it's historical, that they leave for other agencies. And that's just not something that we want. So we are rectifying that, and I'm proud to say that I'm a proponent of that and have been pushing that process. Additionally, where we can improve, we can improve on public services and the efficiency of those services. I'll give you one example, is we had an aging fleet, a white fleet specifically, which is our light fleet vehicles in Fort Pierce, in addition to the police department vehicles. Well, I did some research. I brought forth an initiative to partner with a private enterprise, which happens to be Enterprise Rental Cars. They have a fleet division within their group, and we're able to secure new fleet for the employees in the Fort Pierce Police Department through an agreement that also brought down our maintenance costs. Annual maintenance on each vehicle was astronomical, and I know that, and that's part of my expertise and my professional career. And so I did the research, brought it forward. We were able to save the city, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it looks expensive on the front. There's always capital investment, but it's the ROI, the return on the investment. Spend the money upfront, get the return for the benefit of the public after that. You know, in the city of Fort Pierce, that B-rating, I think that we can do a better job in addition to what we do now, looking at our codes and our ordinances. We have antiquated codes and ordinances, and we are piece by piece increasing the review of those codes and bringing them up to date. Some of them are from 1960s. I kid you not. Hard to believe, but it's the truth. Some of them from 1983, when that code was updated, and some of them from 2005. So we're taking on those processes, but it's, you know, you can only do so much with what resources we have, but we're doing it. So that's where I stand with the B-rating, and I'm proud to say we have accomplished a lot in the almost four years that I've been there.
Okay, very good. Thank you, sir. We're going to start with you on this question. Fort Pierce is a city in contrast. There's some extraordinarily wealth in the city. There's also some extraordinary poverty in the city. How does the city commission go about making sure that the prosperity is maybe more broadly shared than it is now? How do you foster economic opportunity in underprivileged neighborhoods?
Sure, and that's a combination of a lot of things. We have a very robust grant program. We have a robust community development block grant division that works hard at getting into our neighborhoods and into the folks that need it the most. And it's important that we continue to do that, you know, it's reaching out and looking for opportunities. You know, our budget, it increased this year because of property values. We are so far maintaining the millage rate, but it's really addressing those issues through partnerships. It's addressing those issues with small business-type applications, because folks in the city of Fort Pierce that are in any zone of the city are looking for those economic opportunities. And what that does is that's a catalyst for the next step. It's a catalyst for job opportunities, so that the folks that want to get out and they want to do some work, they can. And so the city, we do a good job at partnering with those groups and bringing in the funds and concentrating the funds in our budget that are specific to opportunities for our residents. So in addition to that, it is taking that prosperity or that revenue, it's not prosperity, taking the revenue that comes into the city and focusing in on the beautification. You know, I'm not talking about overspending on landscaping. I'm talking about the basic necessities of connecting neighborhoods. And when you connect neighborhoods with a walkable-type community, where we're improving the streets, we're adding the sidewalks, then folks that are less fortunate are able to, you know, get to work. They're able to walk to neighborhood grocery stores. They're able to get to a transportation bus station, which we have right there at H Street and Avenue D. That's another one of our partners with the transit organizations. I know the county just signed a new agreement with a transit group, but that's right in the heart of the city of Fort Pierce, and so many of our folks utilize that. We have to make sure that they're provided the opportunity to use it, whether it's a grant program that funds the bus fares, or it's a sidewalk that connects them from their home to that system. In addition to that, is just looking at ways to... Honestly, we have a problem in the city, and it's nationwide, but it's with our homeless population, and getting the nonprofits, the churches, to address the situation in partnership with the city and providing an opportunity to help out our homeless folks and give them a hand up and a step up. You know, we have the United Against Poverty right there at 25th Street and Orange Avenue, and that's another group that we've seen improvement with, and we've helped out along the way. It's all of those combination of items that we can realize a growing and a prospering city that just brings together, not only, like you said, the more wealthy population, but with the underprivileged population and just giving them those opportunities to get that next step up. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Perry, same question to you. How does the city work to improve economic opportunity in underprivileged neighborhoods?
I think a lot of it has to do with starting young, educating our citizens, starting young. We need some more programs for young people. We need to show them that through their efforts, as they're growing up, they can improve their lives. And I'm sure that there are a lot of programs out there that could be activated by the city and help that. But I really think that the simplest way to do that is start with the education. We've got to show these young people, whoever they are and wherever they are, to show them that good habits and good worth, I think, pay off in the future. We need also, you know, we need to check on the blighted areas a little bit more than we do. You know, Avenue D is all spruced up. When you get away from that in all parts of the community, not only in the Lincoln Park area, but south of Virginia Avenue, those streets are in terrible repair. We need a comprehensive plan. We need to look at what we have and what we have to do and get a comprehensive plan over a long time span of years, probably 10 to 15 years, and get these thoroughfares where you don't wear your car out when you're traveling. And that's all I have to say about that subject right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perry, we'll stick with you for our next question here. Taxes are another issue in the city. Residents of Fort Pierce, in fact, have one of the highest, if not the highest, total property tax millage rate in all of Florida, according to Florida Tax Watch. Now, that's not all the city's fault, obviously. That includes county taxes and taxes from other authorities. But what can the city do to reduce its tax rate? Or is it realistic to think the city can reduce its tax rate, given the fiscal challenges and need for funding that it faces?
I think it all boils down to austerity program. We spend a lot of money, I think, unnecessarily. We need to take a look at some of these people in different departments making $100,000 a year and not showing up on a job. The city has to run like a profitable business, and I don't think it does that. You know, they're in the real estate business, basically competing with the private sector. They were buying property up a long time ago, and we still have some of it, but they bought some for $5 million and sold it for $121,000, $1,250,000. And oh, yeah, I got back on the tax roll. And by the way, the guy did a real good job with that old bag factory property. It looked real nice. Those kind of decisions, you know, were being saddled with a lot of decisions that were made a long time ago. We need to look at the property that the city owns and put it for sale. Let's get rid of it and bite the bullet and get other private industry into these properties. We need to really scrutinize the budget and look at where they can cut the budget. The taxes, we are the highest, I guess, in the state, and that needs to be addressed. But you only can do that if you operate efficiently, and I don't think this city's ever operated efficiently. I don't think their budget's been scrutinized enough as to salaries and expenses. So that's where I think that I have the time to devote to really look into it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Johnson, I know the city held the line on its millage rate this year, although property values went up, so that means people are going to be paying a little bit more. Is it realistic to think that the city could reduce its millage rate in the future?
It is realistic to contemplate that in the future. Last year, actually, I was the only commissioner to vote against the budget because we did not reduce the millage rate. This year, I am a proponent of keeping the millage rate consistent at our rollback rate and keeping it in line because of what is happening with the coronavirus, what is happening within the programs. In the previous question, where we need to focus our expenditures and focus our work to balance the city and try to improve the city services for our residents. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, that's what we're looking for. So do I disagree with my opponent on a few of the statements? I do agree with him on the part of scrutinizing the budget. I do that every single year. I've done it. I'm proud to do it. I'm a numbers person. I enjoy doing that part of the budget and scrutinizing each department and looking at what they're really doing. How do you bring together efficiencies within departments? I'll give you one, that each department was paying for, you know, their own cell phone services, for example. And so how do you bring that under one group that manages that process? You know, and that's what I do on a routine basis. So the city budget, I'm not sure where the comments about the employees and their salaries is going, but, you know, we've kept that in line. We've had some departments that have frozen their positions, so they're freezing them. They're holding steady. We actually are holding the line and decreasing expenditures at the end of fiscal year 20, which is in the current fiscal year, so that we can prepare for the future. We're also contributing to the reserves and building up our reserve funds, which is a responsible thing to do for any municipality or government, so that you're prepared for an emergency. You're prepared for a disaster. We're a coastal community, because we have to be ready at all times. We're still fighting with FEMA on Hurricane Irma and trying to get a seawall repaired. Actually, it's in process and almost finished, but we're paying for that, and we're trying to get the reimbursement. They're not too sure that they really want to give it to us. I hope that they change their mind. But, you know, it's the basic services of maintenance where they start to scrutinize. If we have no history that we've been doing our part to protect or repair or improve our own infrastructure, why is the federal government going to give us money? And those are the questions they're asking, and those are the parts and pieces of where our tax rate and our tax structure has to stabilize. And so maintaining 6.9 mills this year in the city of Fort Pierce gives us a revenue $18, $19 million. That's truly all it is, and the overall budget is $42 million. And here are ad verum, you know, revenue that comes in as 18 or 19. That's not a lot to work with, but we're doing it, and we're doing it through efficiencies and programs that are put in place to address the needs of the community, to address the situations where we haven't been maintaining infrastructure. We have not been maintaining buildings, which is, again, you know, one of those fields that I work in. And folks expect that. They expect you to have a good balanced budget. They expect us to spend the money wisely. We have to scrutinize the departments and take notice of that. Other parts and pieces of the tax structure, you know, yes, I'll go back to it. I'm ready to reduce the taxes. I can't do it this year. I didn't vote for it. I'm voting for it to be held constant. I'm voting for us to reduce our debt service. That's what those votes mean. And that's, at the end of the day, we have to get rid of that. We have to reduce it, the debt service, that is, so that we can prepare for our future and that we can pass on, you know, a budget to future generations or a city of future generations that has stabilized. And then be forward-thinking. If we don't have programs and opportunities in place, you know, economic development, that's just going to stagnate. We're trying to find ways just to get folks to do infill projects within the city, within the downtown, within Avenue D, Lincoln Park community. You know, we want them to be excited, and we want folks that are looking at our city to come in and say, wow, they've got it together. Look at their budget. They're reducing their debt service. Yes, their taxes on a combined level, it is high, no doubt about it. But if we can get folks in homes and owning homes, now they can, you know, file for a homestead exemption, then their tax burden and their tax rate, you know, then, of course, decreases. But if they're paying rent, you know, the landlord and the property owner is going to, of course, make money. It's a revenue-driven business, so they're going to, you know, provide a rent rate that is expensive. So, you know, it all goes hand in hand. It ties together. But I'm definitely an advocate of reducing the taxes when it seems necessary, when it seems appropriate. And, you know, the things like safety and security, police department, creating a secure environment in City Hall, creating a secure environment for our residents, you know, those are just important items, and it's part of the daily operations of the city of Fort Pierce. And, you know, Mr. Mims, our city manager, he does a good job at asking for a lot more than what we can give him. He does a good job at scrutinizing the expenses that he says, oh, that's just not going to happen. And he's got a finance director that does the exact same thing. She takes it. She puts it in her spreadsheet. She sees what's coming out and says, you know, we just can't afford it. To be honest with you, commissioners, you're going to lose this program or lose this opportunity if you fund this. And, you know, at the same time, she says, we got to build up our reserves. Don't forget. So, and I appreciate that, and that's something that's very, very important to the commission and important to me. Thank you.
Okay, good. Mr. Johnson, we'll stick with you for this next question. It's about redevelopment. There are obviously a couple significant redevelopment projects going on down near the waterfront. You've got the port of Fort Pierce, which is being turned into a mega yacht facility. You've got the old HD Kings site, King's Landing, which recently ran into a bit of a snag. Late July, the city commission voted to spend $170,000 to remove the old foundations of a power plant and some other buried debris. There have been questions about the port situation and the company director and the contract. That's a county operation, but certainly the outcome of that project has great bearing on Fort Pierce's economic future. Is the city, is the city commission doing enough to move these projects to fruition? Are they going to come to fruition? And what does the city have to do to make sure they do?
Well, let's see. Are they going to come to fruition? Yes, I believe so. I just talked to a county commissioner at an event this past week, and they verified for me when I asked, you know, is their contract agent director, are they paying their bills? And they said, yes, absolutely. Are they on track with, you know, the delivery of the boat lift, you know, the 1,500-ton lift that's coming in, the biggest one in the world? And they said, yes. You know, it's behind because of the pandemic. However, it is moving forward. As far as the King's Landing development, yeah, we've hit some snags there. Not only did we find through ground-penetrating radar some debris that was buried or some structural supports that were buried from years and years and years ago, but yes, we are going to move forward. We have to get that out of the way for the type of development. That's one of my... the type of development. Uh, that's one of my expertise fields uh or, or I'm, you know, my fields. And so it, it's just, it's important that we understand the, the, the product that was told that we were going to give and what the product is actually. And that's where that expenditure stands. Uh, the old Fort Pierce power plant, the King plant. You know, it was built in 1910, 1911, I think is when it finalized. You know, on Thanksgiving Day is when they fired it up in 1911. And here we are, you know, talking about it in 2020 and, and trying to, to get it finalized. So we can turn it over and provide a, a private opportunity, look for that, that revenue stream. So um, the developer is working on their partnerships. Of course, the hotel industry and a hotel you're coming into the city of Fort Pierce. Well, we know where that stands with a pandemic. Uh, folks just aren't traveling. However, um, I have hope and they are, are on track with where they stand with the process that was put in place. The city of Fort Pierce is on track with the agreement and the process that was put in place that we agreed upon with looking at the zoning, looking at the uh um, the, the, the connection of the roadways. There's a, an old Avenue B and it's not even a right of way. It was part of the property. Uh, we had to, you know, kind of transfer that and move it around so that it was legally a connect, a connection of a roadway. Um, you know, and, and wow, what a project and an opportunity for the city of Fort Pierce. The redevelopment agency uh is responsible for that. It's in the name of the city or in the redevelopment agency. And that's exactly what it's designed to do is to take an opportunity like the King plant, turn it into something that's prosperous for all, that's going to drive economic opportunity downtown. So, so we talk about, you pinpointed those two items. And for me, it's about connecting all of downtown to those two parts and pieces. You, i- if you transition from Citrus Avenue, Citrus Overpass to the north, you know, moving through the city of Fort Pierce, if you could take a virtual walk and, and look at all the structures that are there, the, the law firms, the little mom and pop businesses, the court complex, uh, moving into Orange Avenue to, to Avenue A and, and the redevelopment, the opportunities that, that Sailfish has brought into an old warehouse and now they're in, in a brewery and, and it's hip and it's fun and it's exciting. We've got more restaurants. We've got more activity. We've got a downtown life that has not been there in a long time. And, and then we're moving into a King Lan, King's Landing type opportunity where we're going to have multi-use. We're going to have residents living downtown. And that is critical to all of this equa, all of the, these equations that put it all together. Um, moving north into Edgar Town, the oldest developed uh and, and settled city or neighborhood really uh from the, from the seventeen, eighteen hundreds, eighteen hundreds. And then moving into Seaway Drive and the port and all the opportunity there. Fisherman's Wharf is another one that it, that I've been in the background, just pushing staff very hard to get something moving with Fisherman's Wharf because that is going to tie into that port development opportunity. You have folks that are going to come in on these ships and these boats. And they want somewhere to go. And, and if we can bring them a, a, an opportunity where small businesses are investing or new opportunities, you know, um, a nightlife, a bar, a, a restaurant, a, a shopping, whatever, not shopping plaza, but a a, a, a mom and pop shopping store uh when they come off the boat, then yay for us and yay for the city of Fort Pierce. So we have to make sure that we're forward thinking, coordinating and connecting all of those opportunities. Looking at the industries that can be brought in, what kind of jobs can be brought in? What kind of folks are going to service, you know, those mega yachts? What kind of folks are going to be in the service industry at the King's Landing uh development? Making sure we have parking infrastructure downtown. We talk about parking. Parking is, is, I say it all the time. It's my nemesis. I talk about it and I talk about it. And it's a focus. And how do we connect all of those things? And how do we provide more parking? How do we provide opportunity for folks that are used to parking in front of the store? Uh, we're going to have to change a little bit. There's no doubt about it. We got to change that, that view. Um, of course, we all want that upfront parking space, but you know, when I travel and I go out of town, I see how far, you know, do I have to walk? Is it one block, two blocks, four blocks? Um, do I get to park in a parking garage that's well lit and secure? Uh, did, was I, was I giving way finding opportunity? Did it show me where to go? Um, and, and so those are all things that, that connect us and, and there's redevelopment opportunities. Oh, the other part of it, I forgot all about it. East side of Indian River Drive is, you know, the museum. I call that museum park or the, you know, that, that frontage where we've preserved waterfront for our residents. We provided a tourist destination with the Manatee Center and the Pegasus Gallery. Um, I've been talking to folks over at the uh, you know, History Museum in Smithsonian. Hey, would you like to be on the, the mainland side of the bridge and get over here and let's create a park that is visible, it's viable? Uh, it, it's an opportunity for folks to come in. Maybe we can have field trips with our schoolchildren. And, and they get to spend an entire day right there on our, our riverfront. So, you know, those are, those are all parts and pieces of that redevelopment in downtown. And that's just going to blossom out and spur additional growth in our, in our Peacock Arts District and a Lincoln Park community. It's going to, you know, spread like wildfire, you know, through, through Orange Avenue and through Delaware Avenue and, and through, you know, Avenue D and, and the Lincoln Park community. It's going to connect folks. And, and, and we're going to see a, a massive change in the opportunities.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir. Uh, plus question, Mr. Perry. Mr. Perry, Fort Pierce has a lot riding on these redevelopment projects. Is the city doing enough to see them through? Uh, are they going to come to fruition the way everyone hopes they will?
Well, I certainly hope so. Uh, and a little note on the uh, I think it was 170,000 dollars they voted to give to the developer for uh some uh concrete that was below the fourth foot grade. The developer should have done his due diligence on that property. That property cost the utilities authority, I think some 3 million dollars plus to clean up. And that 170,000 dollars came from money that was supposed to go to the utilities authority. But uh, the redevelopment committee uh agency in their infinite wisdom decided to hold back that 400, 500,000 dollars last increment tax credit due to the ratepayers of Fort Pierce. That was ratepayers money. And ratepayers shouldn't be making, paying for mistakes that a developer that was given the land to build on wanted 170,000 dollars to help clean up some more stuff that they found. But that was not part of the cleanup specifications. So the, the, the developer was remiss in not doing his due diligence on that property. That's one, that, that's one thing that I object to. The city, the city gets about 6 million dollars a year from the utilities authority because the utility authority runs it an efficient business and they run it like a business. Uh, as far as the port goes, uh, time will tell. This is uh, the pandemic is, is probably put a hurting on them. Uh, and uh, I think it, I think that it's going to come about sooner or later, maybe a little later. But I think it'll be a boon to Fort Pierce and the citizens of Fort Pierce and employ a lot of people. Uh, I think it'll help us get out of the exorbitant amount of money we paid for all that property uh where Simonson's Restaurant was and so on and, and that area. I think that was another 5 million dollar plus purchase that we're paying bonds for. I think the bond issue at one time was uh uh 5 million dollar payment a year till the 2032 or 33 or something like that. You know, that's, that's ludicrous as far as I'm concerned. Yeah, I think the development will get there eventually and I think it's a good thing for Fort Pierce.
Okay, good. Let's start with Mr. Perry on this question. This is going to be my final question. Uh, before we wrap it up or I throw it to the other board members. Well, let's talk about the Indian River Lagoon. This is another perpetual issue, water quality in Fort Pierce. Obviously uh, other government agencies have a, a bigger role to play uh in trying to keep the lagoon clean, but Fort Pierce does have a role to play. Is the city doing enough to help foster good qual, good water quality in the Indian River, River Lagoon?
I don't know if I'm qualified to answer that question. I certainly hope they're doing their jobs. But you know, I see uh issues all over town and a bad rain where our storm drains are not draining adequately. And I don't know if that contributes to the problem or if it lessens the problem. We have a lot of drainage from the town proper going to the, going into the lagoon at, at different times uh and different, different areas. So I, I don't know that the city has taken a look at that. But it's certainly something that should be discussed. And uh, uh improvements should be made where necessary as long as we can find the money to do that.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, lagoon. What's the city doing? Is it enough?
Um, there, there, I'll just say, we are doing a lot and it's never enough. If we had 100% watershed that did not go to the lagoon, I think we could say we're doing enough, but we're not there. And uh, the state of Florida is definitely not there. Um, you know, as an environmental engineer, this is like near and dear to my heart. I'd had a science fair project in seventh grade and I literally did a water quality project that led me to, to do what I do today, or at least to, to the yearning in my heart. So uh, as far as dedicated resource, city of Fort Pierce. Uh, if you look at the Savannah Road uh compound and you look at the, the amenities that have been provided there, a beautiful nature path and a beautiful water treatment, a stormwater treatment area uh with floating uh beds that are treating the water before they're discharged into the lagoon uh right there on Savannah Road, right there in, in city of Fort Pierce property. A joint project uh that is just has huge environmental benefits. Uh, and it's, you know, millions of dollars and, and the county and the city both have been focused on it for a long time. Uh, there's still much more to do. Uh, Georgia Avenue, there's a watershed that comes in through the heart of our city uh from, you know, I'll just say the areas of District One and District Two. If you're not sure, District One and District Two actually come together at Georgia Avenue and US One right there. And, and those are, that's a citywide benefit. It comes across and, and you know, it ties in and actually part of the Virginia Avenue Canal. They all, they all connect in some way uh to get back to that Savannah Road compound and that, that beautiful uh project that's down there. Uh, i- if you look at Morse Creek, Morse Creek, a, a direct contributor from Western Fort Pierce into downtown and into lagoon. Uh, we have control structures and, and stormwater controls. We've partnered with the FWC in St. Lucie County, uh, multiple agencies. We have volunteer missions. We go out and we clean up Morse Creek. We get the uh, the uh, the water lettuce out there, out of the, the situation where it's contributing nutrient load. And, and we bring that out of the Morse Creek Canal so that uh we have less contribution of nutrient load to the Indian River Lagoon. Uh, we're also utilizing um, you know, certain species of, of critters or fish or, or plant species to, to help us with this process, those that, that, that that get into the digesting and, and the use of the nutrients that are coming through. Um, you know, and those are things that I volunteer with. Those are things that I, that I talk to uh staff about. Jack Andrews, our city engineer, I mean, he is always trying to come up with ideas because I'm always calling him on the phone or talking to him. We bought a machine or leased a machine uh to, to get some of that nutrient load out not too long ago. Our public works department uh actually, and we ended up bringing in a contractor to help us with the, the situation and, and keeping that uh, that Morse Creek Canal cleaned out uh because it is one of our, our biggest contributors. Uh, what else did we do? Oh, street sweeping. Uh, no one contribute or contributes or thinks of street sweeping to be a part of Indian River Lagoon cleanup, but it is. It's integral. And uh, just, just heard my opponent talk about, you know, storm drains that are backing up. Well, you know, part of that is our uh, you know, our greenery, our lawn mowing practices. Uh, do we, do we have too much grass? We just got into a conversation with South Florida Water Management District about irrigation. And nutrient loads that uh, that might be born from too much irrigation. If we fertilize our, our yards and our grass, um, it might enter the street. So maybe a street sweeper gets it, but I doubt it. Um, so that sand, it might migrate during a rainstorm into our storm drains, which of course is carrying with it organics, which organics take into the, the canals and the collection systems and into the lagoon. So that little program that we just talked about on Monday with South Florida Water Management, they've asked for our partnership in opportunities with limiting the irrigation days in the city of Fort Pierce. And I raised my hand and I said, let's do it. We can do this. Um, and that's, they're asking for a two day limitation uh based on your, the, the last digit of your address, odd or even. And we can do that. Um, is it nice to have a green grass yard? Of course it is. Green grass is, it's not exactly Florida native in the way we do it today. Um, but if we can reduce those loads, we can do our part. We're saving generations and generations uh of, of a lot of headache. And, and that just goes in part with not only stormwater runoff, but it talks about our water and our water sources and exactly uh the utility that the city uh residents own, the Fort Pierce Utilities Authority, they get their water from shallow water wells. Um, and, and if we're just pulling too much out for irrigation, um, then 20 years from now or a good drought, we might not have enough water. So it is my goal. Um, and we can talk about that as a, that's a separate line item. That's nothing to do with the lagoon specifically, but it has to do with water. It has to do with watershed and, and it ties all together. Um, but you know, the lagoon is a diverse estuary. It's part of the tourism of the city of Fort Pierce. It's part of why people come here. And we have to do our part, you know, even looking at uh Mr. Oppenborn over at the county and he's doing those, the oyster beds and, and man, what a phenomenal process. He gets schools involved and kids involved and charity organizations and nonprofits and they come out and they have a day of, you know, bagging shells and getting them out there into the lagoon and deploying those resources to help take out those nutrients that we continue to, to load. Um, because that's who we are. We're human beings and we've did the, we've done it for a long, long time. You know, we transitioned from being a agriculture, orange grove type community into more urbanized environment. And it was easy to just let the water run downhill, which is from west to east and go into the lagoon. And we're finding out now, we've been doing it a little bit the wrong way. And how do we improve that process? And we have dedicated resources uh to help that uh improvement in the city of Fort Pierce. We have our own stormwater utility, which is very rare. Folks are actually using the city of Fort Pierce uh model as a catalyst to improve their stormwater utility systems or create a stormwater utility, I should say. And, and we're just doing it. And, and good for us for being forward thinking years and years and years ago to say, hey, I raised my hand. I want to have a stormwater um utility put onto my bill so that I can do my part because we are a coastal community. And like I said, we are dedicating many, many hours and resources. Um, you know, just look at the street sweeping. Actually, I didn't even finish the street sweep part. Um, we're going to contract out or at least staff is looking into contracting out street sweeping because we're not doing enough. We have equipment in our fleet that to street, to uh sweep the streets. But we can't do it. We can't keep up. So if we can provide a partnership there and contract that service out, we're going to save money at the end of the, end of the day. And also we're going to get grant money probably for maybe some, some infrastructure or, or, or some equipment or for a contract. Uh, but either way, it's a forward thinking approach to being more proactive. So I'm excited anytime we can clean up the lagoon and, and um, you know, I'm, I'm voting for and dedicating resources whenever I can. Thank you.
Okay, good, good. We are quickly running out of time. I want to throw it open to my editorial board members. Do you guys have any questions here?
Not for me, thanks.
Okay. Uh, so let's, let's uh, uh, do uh, uh, final statements. If there's anything you want to talk about we didn't talk about, or if you just want to give a closing statement, uh, let's keep it to one minute apiece. And Mr. Johnson, you're up first.
Um, you know, I, I just, I just want to say that I, that I'm proud of the, the work in my first term. Um, I didn't ever think I'd be here. Uh, honestly, um, I was just, I'm very fortunate and I'm very blessed to, to be in this opportunity. I have the planning background. I have the engineering background. I sit on the boards and committees, the transportation, uh, regional planning council. Uh, you know, I have a budgeting background in, in the work that I've done, especially in specifically to governmental budgets. Um, that experience is, is huge in this process. I bring a lot of forward thinking uh questions to each subject that comes before the commission. I make them crazy with the number of questions that I ask. Um, you know, I, I just, I have energy, enthusiasm about our city and where we're headed. Uh, I, I want to do it because I just love our city. I want to do it because of our kids. I want to do it because of um, those that come here to visit. I want to do it for those that retire here. And, and I, I'm just the guy for the job and, and I didn't think I was going to be um, the guy sitting in this seat, but four years ago I'm here and I'm ready to continue. I'm ready to continue all the good, hard work and forward thinking opportunities and decisions. We've got a lot to do in the next four years and I'm willing to do it and I'm going to put in the hours and the time and the effort to do so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Perry, one minute, closing statement.
Yes, well, as I've said, I have, I have all the time in the world devoted to the job. I'll be on call on a daily basis in the office if elected. My phone will be answered 24 hours a day. As far as experience goes, I generally managed several automobile dealerships in my lifetime and had to deal with budgets all the time. Very familiar with budgets. I also know that my experience on the Utilities Authority Board, my trips to Washington, to meet with our elected representatives, Senator Nelson and Congressman Mast, I did that twice a year. I've got walking around since and I think I can do a good job for the citizens, all the citizens of Fort Pierce. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, I want to thank our candidates, Jeremiah Johnson and Mike Perry for being here today, answering our questions. If you missed, viewers, if you missed any portion of this broadcast, you can go back and play it from the beginning on our Facebook page. It's also on our YouTube channel. Check out tcpalm.com/elections for all things Treasure Coast in terms of the November 3rd election. Again, I thank our editorial board for being here, guys, the candidates. Good luck to you in November. We'll see you all again soon.
Thank you all.
Thank you for the opportunity.